K L T V Sun Check, K L T V Sun Check.
K L T V Sun Check, K L T V Sun Check.
Good morning. Welcome to the Tuesday morning BLCC meeting. We can start with the flag salute if you want to join me.
Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll ask Mr. Mortensen for review of the minutes.
I know this will come as a surprise to people, but I reviewed the minutes of the activities last week and I moved to approve those minutes.
Have a motion to approve the minutes, any comments, corrections? Seeing none, call for a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Also vote aye, thank you. Run down the consent agenda, we do have Board Health at 10 o'clock today. Shouldn't be a problem today, we seem to have a pretty short agenda, so we'll see how that goes. On the consent agenda, final cost report for work done on Klammer River Road. This is a replacement project, this is on here because we had to correct the mileage, we had the mileage wrong. I don't remember what we had it, but it's actually 2.35 to 2.39. Agreement, and this is through our treasurer's office with Phoenix Security Group, they use them for courier services for various county departments. It extends the agreement one additional year, the contract increase of 3.1%, a total of 12,902.52 for the year. The following two were bid awards, a bid award to L Rock Industries for aggregate for surface treatment in 2024, it's our surface rock and stuff for this coming year. For $319,132.39 and then a bid award to several different places, Gardner Rock, L Rock Industries, Harold Sorensen Trucking, J H Stordahl for purchase of road materials for the period between May 1, 2024 and April 30, 2025. We use several different places, so if we're working up in cast rock, we use a place close to them, if we're down in woodland, we use a place close to them, so that's why you see several on there. Two pieces of correspondence, both from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, one was on notice dated 4 of 18 of 24 regarding instant report related to project safety on Swift number two. And the other one, also the same date, the notice dated 4/18/24 regarding right abutment seepage modifications feasibility study on Swift number one. And then vouchers for this weekend amount of 3,706,467.87 cents. That's it for consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to point out that item number three, the bid award to L Rock is for the chip sealing maintenance projects and staff announced that they were about doubling the efforts of chip sealing roads around the county with this bid, so it's out of the ordinary. And yeah.
On that one, Dennis, do you remember, I thought that was a lower price than we paid last year.
It was, it was, yes.
Which is surprising.
Lower, how they put it, lower per ton rate, I think is how they put it.
That's right.
And they're fairly local firm out at Toledo, that's local.
Ready for a motion?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I move, we approve today's consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion to approve today's consent. Any questions on it? Seeing no hands, nobody approaching, we'll call for a vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also vote aye. Carolyn, I promised I'd give you five minutes today or so, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, I am once again soliciting interested parties to serve on and against committee for a proposition that is appearing on the primary election ballot, this is the annexation of five precincts connecting our transportation benefit district from Longview to Lexington. So if anyone is interested in serving, please come to the auditors officer elections and we will get you signed up, I appreciate it.
Before you go, it might be useful for you to explain that proposition a little bit.
So I know that the board has talked about it publicly and I was trying to be respectful of your time, but you have talked about it, this is five precincts, Beacon, Beulah, Sparks, Lexington and Ponderosa. Those, according to the law, the transportation benefit district in Longview needs to be contiguous. So those in Lexington are wanting this service, but in order to provide that, all of the precincts in between must also pay into this annexation fee, the three tenths of one, three tenths of a percent sales tax increase to provide this service.
And that actually is an increase.
Absolutely, yes, it would be a new, a new tax for those precincts because they would technically be annexed into this transportation benefit district in which they didn't participate in the past. So it's, it's actually only the voters in these five precincts that will be deciding this measure. However, for my interests, seeking people that want to represent an against committee, that can be county wide. New law does not go into effect until January 1 of next year that members would need to reside within the jurisdiction to take part in those committee against.
So, Mr. Chairman, I think we have the time, I could ask more questions? Yeah, so I found, I find it interesting that on the ballot there, you've got variations, combinations all over the map. How do you manage that?
With the districts?
Yeah, so for example, I'm going to come to you someday and say I lost my ballot and you're going to give me a new ballot. Do you have to print it then, or how do you get, you're gonna, yeah, I'll stop.
Yeah, our software where we design the ballot is assigned districts and precincts, so the software is smart enough to know that certain districts incorporate designated precincts, so when a measure like this is triggered, it's kind of interesting because this is a new district, right? So we have to create a district in our software to say, hey, we're going to create a ballot issue that includes only the five precincts named in this resolution, and so our software creates a ballot style for these particular precincts, so everybody gets a different ballot style, which is why when you receive your ballot, you'll see that included in the bar code, it'll also have your precinct and precinct portion that determines what you can and can't vote on. So when you lose your ballot, you come in and I know exactly which precinct and precinct portion ballot is for you alone and you only get to vote on the issues that pertain to your particular precinct and portion.
Can you recall a time when an error occurred in all this process?
Well, I can recall a time when there was an error, but I wouldn't call it an error necessarily. Way back in, I want to say 2007, the Port of Woodland changed their internal director district maps and they didn't notify elections in a timely manner, so I remember being on the front page of the Daily News with having to reprint ballots because we weren't notified in time and we reprinted ballots with those corrections because port districts are like commissioner districts, their elections are conducted by internal director districts in the primary. So in that primary, I remember appearing on the front page of the Daily News with a headline that said something like ballot error. It was great.
Also, if I come to you and I want a new ballot, you don't actually print it, then you go to the stockroom someplace and pick up the appropriate ballot?
Yeah, we really want our, our our vendor, the printer, to print our ballots because he prints them on a heavier weight paper. They're professional, they're folded so that they don't fold over the top, a seam doesn't end up over the top of a ballot issue. So we print these overs and we keep them in a filing cabinet for each election in case people need a replacement, but inevitably we, we do run out and we have to print on demand ballots almost every election, especially in a presidential year.
And then afterwards, the ballots you didn't use, how do you deal with them?
Those are just considered overs and they're stored with the election materials for the retention period specified in law.
Oh, yeah, I'd be inclined to destroy them so that they couldn't be purloined and
We have to
I found.
We have to account for those and we have to store those, even though they're not voted, we have to store those.
I could ask questions all day long, but I don't need to hog up the microphone.
Well, I hope to see some volunteers hit the elections office today. Thank you for the time.
Okay, Carolyn, thank you. Okay. Couple announcements, let's see what we got, tomorrow we have no workshop meeting at 2:30. We had no agenda items, we have some bid openings at 1:30 in public works, but we don't have a workshop tomorrow, so that's pretty slim. Other than that, it's, it's open for public comment.
A question, I just saw an email from WASAC about a meeting this coming Monday, I think, that conflicts with our normal Monday meeting. Is there a thought on how we're going to handle that?
This I haven't seen.
It's not, it's not the virtual assembly that they always have on Mondays.
No, it's not, that's always at noon, this is at a conflict time, let me see if I can.
Well, they have, the email I saw, they're looking at, because they have a general meeting that's going to be in Yakima, but it's in June and and it does conflict with Wednesday, couple Wednesday meetings.
Oh, okay, so I looked at it hastily, it's not this coming Monday.
Right.
And that's because of the changes in bylaw potential?
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Hey. We're open to public comment if you want, otherwise it'll be a fairly short meeting, Mr. Greer, come on up. The green light, bright green light. There'll be a button.
There.
There you go.
Okay, I'm here today to offer a tribute to Rick Von Rock. I'm also here to offer a tribute to Arne Mortensen. I also am going to explain the nickname that I have, it's called Sugar Daddy. Rick Von Rock has prostate cancer, has had a stroke, has fallen and broke two ribs. He is in assisted living at the end of Broadway, his room is 119. If you're a friend of his, he needs to see you. Rick served our union well. He was a wage delegate for a number of years. He was the AWPPPW Vice President for a number of years. He was politically active. He was one of two political mentors I had in union politics. One was Don Harkema, the other was Rick Von Rock. Don Harkema got the lifetime award for, for being a Democrat. Rick should have also got that, Rick was a hard worker. Arne Mortensen tribute. Five for five years, Rick and I were observers of this group. It's at that length of time, you develop relationships, you develop relationships of trust because you know each other. As the As the years went on, I found that I had common experiences with Arne. Arne worked for the Lawrence Livermore Labs, which is a theoretical lab in the, uh, near Oakland. Uh, I went drinking at the bars in the valley at the same time and there were young engineers there that were fighting World War Three, World War Three. They would talk theoretically about dropping bombs on Seattle or whatever, this type of thing. Arne and I talked about this. We talked about security clearances, how difficult it was to obtain one. It, it became a common bond with us.
You know what the Daily News is gonna say? Arne wants to drop an atom bomb on Seattle.
Yes. Well, politics being what it is. Arne is a fan of Bob Sudor. Bob Sudor has a brilliant mind. He was a fish buyer on the Columbia. But many of you may not know, I was on the Columbia on a fish tender for Bumblebee Fish Company. Rob was my foreman at Longview Fiber. And I'll tell you a humorous story about him. Uh, you know about Rodney Kangas? Well, anyway, Rodney was over at the Millwright's, uh, lair and slammed a pole up above them scared the heck out of them. Well, he knew that the Millwrights were coming back, so he put a, a pail of water up above the door. And when Ross came through, he thought it was the Millwrights and Rob got soaked. And Rob went and chewed the Millwrights out because he thought it was all their fault. So. I worked on the west, on the, on the south end with a crew by the name of Ronnie Fadden was the Millwright. Bob Barnes was the Mill, Millwrights. Walt Mace was a pipe fitter. And Rodney Kangas was station four, the leader, and I was station six. We were always getting in trouble. I, uh, Steve was, I think, the one that best handled us. The Millwrights took it on themselves to, there was a foreman candidate and he would be sleeping in a particular place. Well, he had his buggy outside and Ron Barnes, Ronnie Fadden took the buggy and put it out in the mill. When he, uh, when it came out, he couldn't find his buggy. So he had to call the foreman and ask, where's my buggy? And so, anyway, to make a long story short, he wasn't the foreman candidate anymore. Teresa Purcell is one of my closest friends. I made a, a comment in here that I thought that, that, uh, Arne was an honorable man. I was running for the E Board and Teresa, there was a big row because I had said that Arne was an honorable man. And Teresa Purcell was running against me, so I made a speech about being a sugar daddy, telling how much I paid to the, to the, uh, party and whatever. And Teresa says, if Dick is running, I withdraw my nomination. When Teresa was married, I bet you don't know this, but Jeff Wilson was one of the honored guests at the, at the wedding. Teresa has a broad view of, of politics, but she has that killer instinct. She likes to win. Sugar Daddy, how I got that name? I, I've given over thirty thousand dollars to the Democratic Party over the last eight years. I'm budgeted for forty-eight thousand in the next four years. I gave five thousand to John Minnie for the fiasco over Longview City Hall. I, uh, sent the check to, to the appropriate person and Rosemary Supola got a call. She says, who in the hell is Richard Dryer? And so, so Rosemary says, well, she says Dick works in the background. He says, he's our sugar daddy. Arne and I share two common bonds. One, we are teachers like Steve Farrell and myself. When you're a journeyman, it is your responsibility to teach your apprentice the trade. You have other classes that you go to, but really the primary responsibility lies on the, on the journeyman. Arne is a teacher. People come in here and, and Arne has a sophisticated vocabulary. I can't match his. But when there are people that need to understand things, he talks in simple terms and gets across his point. The one thing that I think that Arne and have, Arne and I have together is that we're philosophers. We argue about how many angels can dance on the, on the head of a pin. Well, are they union angels or are they conservative angels? I'm going to close by saying that it's a privilege to know Arne and it's a privilege to be his friend. Thank you.
I thank you.
Anybody wanna follow Dick on that? Okay, we, uh, we have Board of Health that'll kick up at, at ten o'clock in about thirty, thirty-five minutes. And, uh, this, uh, Tuesday meeting for the BOCC is adjourned. Thank you.
Because so, we did sixty thousand, maybe.
We have ballots.
What inspired you? Have you ever seen anybody who wants to get back around? You're one of the short ones. And I mean, I'm saying you won, which I'm happy, but to you, it's like, saying, I think for that, it was like, that was like, they're probably, and so, and you wait for the way, and that's. And it's not gonna start without it looks.
Yeah.
It's the same place that I. What's happening for that before. Down there. Morning.
Good.
Yeah.
Uh, down. Lewis County. Uh. Sherry.
But she.
Yeah.
So. Didn't we have chats?
Okay. And that every time we go down. And now. I wonder how they buy them. Yeah, it's very handsome. For years.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't. I didn't know.
So. I don't. It's your planning. One.
Three of them. So. Now, she feels she's not. First. Basically. There's one. Let's be.
Oh, I.
In journey.
And we, we were probably assholes. It's pretty sad. Be easy on us.
I'll. No.
She was so much. News that. Um, I've seen it. Yeah. I have. There were. So I talked about all the. Yes.
And because I don't want the media. And, uh. Rose. Was standing in the bathroom using things. I'm being. That's okay. I told. Something. You'll see.
I keep.
She's. Going to be calling. Then. On the. For us.
I'm sure we. There is. You're on now and here's. So. She's. Yeah. So. So what is. I think.
This. No.
This is not. Being a whole. Yeah, I'm gonna have to read that. I think. I know where. You dimmed out. So. You know, where, where they have. Probably. My.
There's.
I'm. I think. Do not. Yeah. Right. What was up? Well, then even. They. I said. Let's put back. Okay. Okay.
We want. Also.
Yeah, I know. So. Those.
So. So.
Oh, right. We have. Um, they do.
Yeah.
No, we're gonna. So. Cause I am. I have. She is. I decided. And they're. Remember, and I. They're all good stuff. Yeah, I'm very. Today.
Yeah. One of my.
How's it that?
I'm not. She's. It's funny. You know. Really. I was.
Yeah.
I was wondering. I got. By the other. And because of that. You're on. She's. And so. I think. Everyone's. I'm. For all. First time. That. So. Probably.
Thank you. Oh, yeah.
To. We need. So.
All right. I've been. I'm. See you. Isn't there? We're. When. Not. You guys. I actually. Uh, I. Jen. Oh. Yeah, I should say. But I choose. The way. Bill. No. I sincerely. I was. I believe. So. Yeah. And I know. I think. I.
Yeah.
Like. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. Yeah.
And, uh. Where's. Where's. And also.
Myself. And. That that should all be. That makes sense. Yeah. I wasn't. I mean. They want. I'm. All be like. Yeah. When she. They. Have. Shout. My major. Getting. On. Yeah. Saying. Delay. Shiny. Going. Yeah. I know. I'm. I'm. No, that would be. Here. I saw. And no. Was. Not. So it's. No, I've got. I think. I'm. Myself. I'm sorry. It is. They may not. Four. Wait. I said twenty eight. We have. They. Well. Bye. I. Will be. I. That's. So.
Yes.
And first. Whether. They. Okay. From. I think. Though I wait for now. Something. I. I. He walked. Said that I'm. Maybe. Down. I was. I. I was. Right. So that's. She knows. You know. That. Yeah. Yeah. But. It's all. I mean. I don't. I have. That I could share. I would. But. Pretty much. Well, I didn't. You know. So. There. So. I. So. I'm.
Yeah.
So. It's not. Different. Things. They really like. They go. I think. So. Uh, yeah. I have. Yeah. So. That's why. We should. President. Awesome. I was. I. So. So. Yeah.
That I. Frank.
Yeah. Then. Make sure.
I see.
I hope. I'm gonna go by there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well. I. Know.
You know.
This. And he thought. Of this. Since. That's. Yeah. No. But. Or. Oh. She. Would. Yeah. I don't. I do. I was. Oh. Well, we've been. Speaking. She. Has. Oh. He's. He's. Small. Especially. Because. Players. She. Doesn't. That's. We're going up for the grid. Over the. She says. Where's. It look like. You're. Uh, watching. Like. Walking. We should. People. I. It's obviously. It was. I was. It was like. So. Yeah. We. My life's. We were. Yes. Turn off. It's. Very. If I. Have. Oh. That's. But. But. Certainly. I don't. I learned it. I was. It was. Some. It was. Wonderful. Your. I see.
Yeah.
I'm. Uh. I. Sort of. I. Managed. Without. Fast.
One.
Please. We. So I'm happy. About. Second. Last. Today. The. How to go. We should. I'm. Do. Today. I. So. You know. So. I.
No.
And that's what. I would. Okay.
Yeah.
But. Well. Yeah. This way. Two. He has. But. And I. Actually. Of course. Very. Just. Better. All. It's. I'm. There's. This. I don't. I think. Anyway. It's. So. So. She's. She's. It's. And so. I don't. There. Well. I mean. It's. Yeah. And when I. I see. This. This. That's. And. It's. Yeah. From this. Study. I'm. I. Well. I don't. I don't. I don't. So. Stop. You're. Sorry. She's. I. He's. I see. I'm. I'm. Well. I. Yeah. Yeah. Exactly. You know.
Yeah.
As well.
Yes. Yeah.
But it's. We just. Show. How. We. We.
So. I.
With him. I'm. You want. I. That's. Oh. There. I don't do that. I want to. You know.
Down. So. I saw. No. She. You really. Very. First. And. So. Jennifer. Oh. So. Grace. And that's. Oh. You know. I. I. I think. Uh. They're. But. Uh. It. That. I. Try. You just.
No. Right. So. That's. And. Okay. You. You want. Your. Your.
There. Patients. And. The town. Someone. No. Better. She went. I want to be. There. So. They're. Say. I think. By. But.
I think it was important for me to make sure everything happens. Very important.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. I finished it. They always made like we are. In the beginning, they said, uh, she will decide. It's fine. He makes another three months. You're in the seven now. Uh, so much. And we're gonna be helping the great and things like that. Like, the main is concerning. Secondly, we've got to let hope she's here. We're told and doing all the things that are the primary process. Or is there any situation when only so that I can keep it on my mind? It should not be such a way of turning it. They can support it and they can like individual station. That was with each of us. He was on to around next day. I know the point even I think America, nobody ever done. She probably. Yeah. Heard her. Please do. Okay. So you have borrowed that. And I took. Professor. I was, I was. Don't want that. That's that's my thing that he's not. It's yeah. And I'm sure he would. No, I wouldn't rush me. But that would be a long time. She, uh, would I say? I would. Yeah, I didn't struggle with that. That guy's. So I need some time. Well, she might have. I'm gonna put energy. He rocks educated days. I don't know. Very, uh. Well, I thought she likes. And so that was. I won't be completely. Well, I. And we didn't. We already did. Should end up with my nephew. So like, yes, I. You know, I did well. I'm gonna talk with Christie today, but she worked. Yeah. Oh, okay. Say, are you gonna do this? I said, how? My focus is leadership. Those, I mean, again, but, you know, I'm not gonna be here. It's not gonna work. We haven't. How are you? I think we'll go back. I'm gonna start. And that's going to be. So everyone's actually saying. They often. Yeah. And we only, again, know all of our meetings. We only have. Well, and it's, I know, I know there are points, like, you have to play the win. But I want to be here with them. And we. Maybe they're in the. I hate to change the video. I mean. Well, yeah. I mean, it's kind of, kind of wasting my time. It's true. I mean, I really don't have anybody to play. Try to get. But if I'm here, I love my. You in this space. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Because, uh. I feel this thing is starting. People that, uh, were putting orders. So very ancient self, you know. She called. Um, that's the. You know, I mean. So the pain goes along that was like for me. The order. I think so. Right. And we're. And passing each other. And feeding down the door. But. I think they're all waiting to get us. That's my. I actually. I think. So I turned, okay, to find three. I started to move. I think the most direct means. I think it's more than bear. I mean, well, besides. So that's something. Your name. Oh, baby. Yeah. And I'm. Right. So there's part of the story. I mean, I hear the. They all know. Others can see that. They're required. It's good. Yeah. There. First. Was it there for an answer? Got you. Really. They're. Yeah. That's it. So. He's. This was. But they. Yeah. Which. Yes. Conversation. Um. You. Uh, I guess. You can also. It's not like. Well, that's. Turned from, you know, how to work. So then. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. I want to talk to you. I do like. I mean, by. That reason. Yeah. I would share my. I think. It would be maybe. And the. I think. Second. I have a review. I'm getting. From the. So. There's. So it's. It always be my. Sorry.
Hey, that was a miracle this morning. You found the ball. I don't. You have a way. Yeah. Well, yeah. We're at all. If it's. Friend with Teresa. Um, no, as long as I can. My pain. Yeah. So yeah, it goes. Yeah. Uh, CB. Three different CB type. Uh, it's. And. And I've got. I know how much. I've got a. Yeah. I find. Sure.
I'm a scientist. Yeah. It's so.
Right.
Oh, I'm. I'm going to. Pardon the. Actually. It's.
I'm. What? The guy was. Actually. You know. I'm talking. Right. Yeah. But it's about that switch. Yeah. Right. I know. It's. And I just. There's something. Well. Well. Oh, yeah. I had that. Yes. More. Yeah.
That occur after vaccination of adults and children, even if you are not sure whether the vaccine caused the adverse event. Fair enough. And according to various researchers, about seventy-five percent of reports are filed by healthcare providers. So the information should not be discounted. In Washington, there have been almost twenty-four thousand reports, including two hundred and thirty-three deaths, four hundred and forty-eight life-threatening emergencies, eight, five hundred ninety-seven permanent disabilities. This is not something you just want to discount. We think these numbers are concerning and other jurisdictions agree. A quick story. In April, a traveling memorial for vaccine injury concluded its U.S. tour in Washington State. Over thirteen hundred names of those seriously injured or killed decorate this interior and exterior of a forty, forty-two-foot-long RV. There would have been more signatures, but many can't travel to meet where the vac, the vehicle stopped. A young assistant pastor in Clark County took the shots in mid-twenty-one and was overcome within a week by a fully debilitating case of Guillain-Barre syndrome. He simply couldn't muster enough energy to leave his house to tell his story to an interviewer. He filed a VAERS report but would not file a court claim because he'd been told the government's pandemic court is a sham. And it is. Hardly any settlements have come out of that, and they're very undersized. Over three years later, he's stuck with permanent disability and a three and a five-year-old to raise. These sad stories are still coming to the front. As data on these downside risks and outcomes continue to be collected, we wanted to find an outside expert who could relay this information to a public health board like yourselves. We found a well-sighted, readable book published by a retired Seattle lawyer who has documented many of the reasons why trust in public health agencies has been broken. So I'd like to introduce shortly Sally Saxon. She's a retired attorney, lived in Seattle for over twenty years. Using her legal research skills, Sally is a lead author of the book entitled COVID-19 Vaccines and Beyond: What the Medical Industrial Complex Is Not Telling Us, which she wrote in collaboration with Dr. James Thorpe and Dr. Deborah Viglione. It has been endorsed by many other doctors and experts who are trying to bring these truths to light. So we don't have to go through the same painful societal upheaval again. Their book provides an overview of compelling evidence, has extensive references and documentation, which I'll be able to give you after the meeting, including some of the CDC's and Pfizer's own data. Uh, Sally, then, I hope you're online there. Uh, please take over and help this county board of health understand why trust has been broken and suggest ways that this could be regained before or during the next health emergency. And thank you again, board members, for this opportunity.
Okay. Thank you so much, Bob, and, and thank you to the board members as well for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you. Yeah, I'm really honored to be here today and I'm very glad to help you in any way that I can, because you have a very important job. And could you just confirm for me before I get started, uh, what, uh, how many minutes I have?
Go ahead. Uh, go ahead and take, take what you need. We're not cramped right now.
Okay. Um, I believe my extensive research about the COVID vaccines has given me a lot of insights into how uh, trust in public health has been broken during these past four-plus years, uh, beyond what Bob just shared. And I do agree with everything that he just said. And, um, our book, which he said you'll get a copy of, uh, tells a story about the COVID vaccines that is quite different than the one told in the corporate media. And one of my co-authors, James Thorpe, is a board-certified OB-GYN physician and a maternal fetal medicine specialist with over forty-four years of experience. And he's done a lot of extensive research and writing on the issue of the harm caused by the COVID vaccines. And, um, my other co-author, Dr. Deborah Viglione, is board-certified in internal medicine, and she has treated a lot of, uh, COVID patients, long COVID and vaccine-injured patients as well. And we've looked at all kinds of evidence from many sources, not just data from the government and documents, uh, uh, from the pharmaceutical companies, but also like insurance company, uh, uh, claims information, embalmers' reports, military and drug company whistleblowers, uh, scientific researchers all over the world who've done various, uh, kinds of microscopic examination and analysis of the vaccine vials and what's in them, medical doctors, the whole gamut. So we've looked at, you know, this subject of the safety and efficacy of the COVID, uh, vaccines, uh, from many different perspectives and disciplines. And the evidence, really, speaking as a lawyer, you know, really all points in one direction. In fact, as many, I should say, the credible, solid evidence that's not biased and tainted by a lot of conflicts of interest, uh, points in one direction. And in fact, many of the doctors and experts all over the world uh, have described these shots, um, not only have they not been safe and effective as claimed, but they're actually the most dangerous medicinal product in history. And I'll share with you some of the compelling evidence why so many have come to that conclusion. Uh, but you'll have to decide whose report you will believe. Uh, and first, just as a preliminary point, uh, not everyone who got the shots got the same thing. As there was quite a wide variation of reactions to the shots, ranging from uh, no adverse reaction at all, which was maybe about thirty percent of the people, all the way to immediate death upon, right after injection, and then everything in between. And, uh, even, uh, between lots from the same manufacturer, there were discrepancies. And the wide discrepancies in the contacts, in the context, contents of the vials themselves were noticed by the authorities even before emergency use authorization, authorization was granted. Uh, there was no uniformity and, which there should be in every pharmaceutical product, but they authorized them anyway. And, uh, the fact that a lot of people, uh, don't seem to experience any adverse reaction is probably one reason why some people don't realize the extent of the harm that's been caused by these shots. Now, the vaccine rollout started December twenty-twenty, and life insurance companies will tell you that in twenty-twenty-one, they were seeing the highest death rates they'd ever seen in the history of the business. Starting in the third quarter of twenty-twenty-one, they saw a forty percent increase in death rates, not in twenty-twenty before the vaccines, but only after the vaccines started. And they said that a ten percent increase in their business is catastrophic, but forty percent was just unheard of. So, uh, I think as, as Bob was, was sharing, I think the best starting point in considering this issue of how to regain trust in public health is to look at what caused the trust to be broken in the first place. And since my, uh, research kind of has a nationwide focus, so my comments are, are based on that particular broader perspective rather than on your, you know, county specifically. So I'm going to talk about seven main factors that I believe caused distrust in public health, which I believe you have a copy of. And I'd like to go through that list of seven, and then I'll give some more specific examples and, uh, examples that I think, um, illustrate, uh, some of these, these reasons. So one of the biggest factors that broke the trust was the public was just to, told too many things about COVID and the shots that were simply not true. And that caused a lot of people to sus, to suspect that there is some kind of hidden agenda. Now, in my opinion, as a former attorney, if you pull all of the most credible evidence together and then look at what I'm going to share through that lens, uh, that there is a hidden agenda, kind of like a hypothesis in the scientific method, uh, it connects many dots. It explains why so many things about this whole COVID era just don't make any sense. And I often say, if you, if we don't know the big picture that all things COVID fit into, we can't really understand why things are the way they are and why so many government policies and actions just don't make sense. But when you see the big picture, the pieces start coming together. A second factor that led to the, uh, distrust is the perception or belief that Big Pharma, the hospitals, insurance companies and others put their own self-interests ahead of the patients. A third factor was, is that appears that too many healthcare providers who have recommended or administered the COVID shots did not even question the government's claims about their safety. They didn't appear to have done their own research, but patients expected them to be aware of dangers or concerns, and especially since this was a new kind of injection. But it appears that, uh, the, uh, the people administering and recommending it just believed the federal government. Uh, a fourth reason is that many people just don't trust what the vaccine manufacturers put in the shots. Uh, contaminants and other foreign substances have been found, uh, in the vaccine vials, and, um, they aren't doing any clinical human, uh, trials anymore on new formulations. And the regulatory agencies have been captured by Big Pharma. So Pharma seems to be able to do whatever they want. And, and, uh, FDA and the regulatory agencies just kind of rubber stamp. And fifth, an important, um, important information was censored and suppressed in coordination with social and corporate media. They sought to keep the public from hearing and reading information that was contrary to the narrative that the shots were safe and effective, even when that information was true. You know, a sixth factor is the way that the government and those in the healthcare system treated and responded to various impacts on those who suffered severe adverse reactions to the vaccines or whose loved one was hospitalized for COVID and died in the hospital after being treated with the government-promoted protocols. A final factor was the one-size-fits-all response to COVID and a total lack of willingness on, on the part of federal government, you know, to even listen or consider other ideas or policies or medicines that actually help people recover. And that's a big reason, I think, why people just don't trust their motives. So first, when we were told that, uh, no early, there were no early treatments for COVID, uh, there were. In fact, in twenty-twenty, there were a lot of doctors all over the world who were successfully providing early treatment literally to countless millions of people. And they were using medicines that had long been on the World Health Organization's list of essential medicines, you know, like hydroxychloroquine, ivermectin, uh, budesonide, you know, those medicines we've all heard about that were very demonized in the media. And, uh, the doctors using those medicines, usually in combination with others, saw almost zero hospitalizations and deaths in, among their COVID patients. It was not quite totally zero, but very close to it, given the numbers that they were treating. Now, on the other hand, in contrast, uh, a very large number of the patients in the hospital who received the government-dictated treatments died. So it did not make sense that the government would not want the public to know that there were, in fact, early treatments that were very effective in helping people recover from COVID. It also didn't make sense that the government, government actually demonized and restricted the use and availability of those medicines that were actually helping people recover while their own protocols often led to deaths. So what's wrong with that picture? What was going on here was, uh, if the government had acknowledged that effective treatments were available, uh, they would not have been able to meet the requirements of the emergency, uh, use authorization for the vaccines. So it was all about the vaccines, you know, despite the strong evidence, you know, even from the CDC's and Pfizer's own documents and data, that a vaccine wasn't even necessary in the first place uh, to end COVID. And the survival rate, according to the CDC, CDC documents, was ninety-nine point five percent for all age groups under seventy. And more, uh, yeah, and if the government had truly wanted to end COVID, the doctors who were providing the early treatments very successfully said it could easily have been done as, and no vaccine was necessary. You know, they knew because they were doing it. And so the estimate, they estimate up to maybe eighty-five percent of those COVID deaths uh, could have been avoided through early treatment protocols. So why did the government demonize these doctors and those medicines instead of embracing them with gratitude for finding treatments that worked? It cannot be simply because of incompetence, uh, mistakes or poor judgment. So the availability of, of effective treatments was an issue the government had to lie about in order to get the vaccines authorized. So they were trying to keep that information away from the public. Uh, children are virtually, uh, at no risk of dying from COVID unless they had some serious underlying condition already. There were many reasons why experts and organizations all over the world strongly pleaded with governments never to give these shots to children. Yet our government turned a deaf ear and even put the shots on the childhood vaccine schedule for babies as young as six months old. And now we hear of elementary school children suffering cardiac problems at rates we haven't seen before. We were told there were over one million deaths from COVID in the U.S. People did die, but the real number of people who died from COVID, only COVID, as opposed to with COVID, was really only a small fraction of that number, around six percent, according to the CDC website and an independent study that was done by several, uh, experts. And the number of cases of COVID based on the PCR test was also grossly inflated. Uh, we were, and for several reasons, which we explain in our book. We were told these injections were vaccines, but actually, according to the FDA's own definitions, these are gene therapy products, not vaccines. And this is a very important, uh, different classification with a whole, uh, different set of, um, much more onerous regulations. Uh, so it was to the benefit of the pharmaceutical companies to have it called a vaccine for various reasons. Um, we were told that these shots were safe and effective, yet the government's and Pfizer's own data and documents tell a very different story. We were told for a very long time, uh, that there was no evidence of any deaths. Uh, the CDC hadn't seen any evidence, but Pfizer's first ninety-day report after the vaccine rollout uh, showed that they had received, that Pfizer had received one thousand two hundred twenty-three deaths just in the first ninety days, ending at the end of February twenty-twenty-one. So the government had that information. In the first year of the COVID shots, the CDC's Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, VAERS, uh, showed nine thousand seven hundred seventy-eight deaths following COVID shots. The VAERS numbers are not accurate because it's well-known that only a tiny fraction of deaths are even reported, as well as, you know, other adverse events. So you have to apply what they call an under-reporting factor to the numbers in VAERS to get a more realistic, uh, estimate of the number of deaths. And, um, just a few days ago, I spoke with our, uh, VAERS consultant, who's one of the top VAERS, um, analysis experts in, in the whole world, Albert Benavides. And, uh, he says that a conservative under-reporting factor would be from eighty-two to eighty-eight, meaning that for every one death that was reported to VAERS, there were eighty-two to eighty-eight deaths that were not reported. And so you have to take the number in VAERS and multiply it by, by that number, then you come up with a, a much more accurate, you know, estimate of what the, the real numbers were. So when he, uh, applied the lower end of that conservative number, uh, he estimated the total number of deaths from the COVID shots, just in the U.S. alone, to be more than one point five million people. Because VAERS, uh, as of, uh, just, uh, several weeks ago, was showing eighteen thousand seven hundred forty-five. So if you multiply that by eighty-two, uh, it comes out to more than one point five million. And the issue of, uh, the under-reporting factor and causation are addressed more in the handout that you'll get at the end of the, uh, my presentation. In mid, in mid, uh, twenty-twenty-one, just several months after the rollout, a whistleblower in the, uh, CMS, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, showed Attorney Thomas Rens' evidence, uh, from that government database. And among those on Medicare who were sixty-five and older, there were over fifty thousand, that's five-zero-thousand deaths within fourteen days of their first or second shots. And that information is also in the handout. And, and that was as of, um, middle of twenty-twenty-one. In April twenty-twenty-one, more than three years ago, Dr. Peter McCullough said that even then, less than six months after the rollout, that he was seeing sudden death on a massive scale in younger people. In your handout, there's a, a link to a four-minute video by Dr. McCullough and one other top cardiologist explaining that these sudden cardiac events should be assumed to be due to the COVID vaccines until proven otherwise. He and others have explained that, according to the FDA's practice, whenever there were reports of at least fifty deaths associated with a particular drug, it would be pulled off the market. Uh, if the, in this case, the fifty-death threshold was reached with the COVID shots no later than mid-January twenty-twenty-one, like about a month after the rollout. Yet despite all of the unprecedented numbers of deaths reported, the government and pharma companies still claim that the shots were safe and effective, and they continue to push them. Uh, military doctor whistleblowers gave testimony in a Senate committee about huge percentages of increase in a long list of conditions among the military in twenty-twenty-one. Hypertension was up two thousand one hundred eighty-one percent. Diseases of the nervous system up one thousand forty-eight percent. And the list goes on and on. That's also in your handout that you'll get at the end. After the hearing, Senator Ron Johnson wrote to the Defense Secretary telling him to preserve all the records. But the military still went ahead and altered the database and tried to make it look like that huge increase, uh, was not correct because of a glitch of some kind in the system. We were told that if you got the vaccine, you wouldn't get COVID. But as, as Bob pointed out, that turned out not to be true either. And in fact, uh, there was a report just like last week that came out showing that in Europe, the most often-reported side effect of the vaccine was COVID. In a published paper and, well, I, I can skip over that. I think we've covered that effectiveness issue that, um, we're also told that these shots were safe for pregnant women. They weren't. Dr. James Thorpe, my co-author, uh, the OB-GYN, has data that shows what he characterizes as catastrophic increases in miscarriages, stillbirths and infertility since the vaccines were started. He also says that anyone who recommends or okays an experimental drug for pregnant women violates the golden rule of pregnancy, which is never, ever give an experimental drug to pregnant women or even breastfeeding women. And, uh, Pfizer, uh, to their credit, did not allow pregnant women to participate in the clinical trials. But it appears that several women apparently got pregnant during the trials because Pfizer reported, uh, data about their pregnancy outcomes in their first ninety-day report. Uh, you know, that covered up through the end of February twenty-twenty-one. And there were a total of two hundred seventy women who reported a pregnancy. But of those, uh, Pfizer, uh, didn't have any, um, outcomes for, uh, any except just thirty-two. They had outcomes for thirty-two, they said, but even five of those, they didn't have any specific information for, so we're not quite sure what happened to those five. But of the remaining twenty-seven, there was only one normal pregnancy outcome, one stillbirth and twenty-five miscarriages. And then, here's the kicker. How did Pfizer characterize that data I just gave you in their first ninety-day report? Their conclusion was, quote, "There were no safety signals that emerged from the review of these cases of use in pregnancy." End of quote. And then they wonder why people don't trust them. So since that time, miscarriages, stillbirths and infertility have skyrocketed. So we're talking about effects on, you know, future generations. And the CDC also had a, a voluntary vaccine safety data system called V-Safe, which had ten million vaccinated participants. Until they stopped the program in May twenty-twenty-one, shortly after it started, the CDC, uh, refused multiple requests to release the data until finally a court forced them to in October twenty-twenty-two. And that data showed that thirty-three percent of those ten million had suffered a significant adverse event and twenty-five percent missed work or school or suffered a serious, uh, side effect that affected their everyday life. Now, why would the CDC not want us to know those data? You know, we were told that Pfizer vaccines were ninety-five percent effective, but that was a total misrepresentation of their own clinical trial data, which showed that the risk of someone getting COVID, if they got no vaccine at all, was only less than one percent to start with. Actually, their record was point eighty-eight percent. That was your risk if you didn't, in their trial, if you didn't get the shot. If they got the shot, the risk of getting COVID was reduced down to point zero four percent. So it's that difference between point eighty-eight and point zero four percent that, that the ninety-five percent reduction represents. As you can see, that's quite different than what we're all led to believe, uh, was ninety-five percent effective. And that measure of risk reduction that Pfizer used in communicating to the public was a gross violation of FDA guidelines, but the FDA didn't say a word. You know, how many people do you think would have gotten a shot if they'd known what Pfizer's ninety-five percent claim really represented? You know, especially if they knew the survival rate was at least ninety-nine point five percent. You know, if they have to lie to us like that to serve their own best interests, no wonder people are suspicious that there's something bigger going on be, behind this beyond just greed. How did the government and those in the healthcare system treat and respond to the vaccine-injured? You know, they've not only been physically harmed, you know, many to the point of disability, but they feel that their voices have been silenced. The government doesn't want to hear their stories. Many have been, uh, told by their doctors that their problems are all in their head, as though their symptoms weren't real. You know, they feel they've been ignored, abandoned, abused, betrayed, not believed, and even vilified by those involved in the healthcare system, including by their own doctors in many cases. They, and, and those who lost loved ones in the hospital are not just dealing with the grief either of the loss of their, uh, loved one's death or the pain and other ways their adverse reactions to the vaccines have turned their lives upside down. They've also had to deal with the trauma and depression, betrayal and anger, among other negative emotions because of the way that they or their loved ones were treated in the healthcare system. Not to mention the financial devastation that many suffered after a vaccine injury, uh, mean, who many, so many lost their job because they could no longer perform it. Uh, and their incomes went way down while their medical expenses went way up. And there were a lot of things that their insurance didn't cover, uh, so they couldn't count on their insurance company. And the pharmaceutical companies are not giving them anything. And the federal government, as Bob alluded to, isn't giving them any financial compensation either. No wonder they feel like they do. And to add insult to injury, the government allocated more than one, uh, one hundred eighty-six point five billion, with a B, dollars in COVID-19-related relief funds for healthcare providers and ultimately made payments to more than four hundred twenty thousand healthcare systems, hospitals, physician groups and pharmacies across the U.S. So while the providers got one hundred eighty-six billion for giving shots that caused unprecedented harm to countless millions of Americans, those who have suffered because of the shots have received virtually nothing and not even an apology. Many have experienced frustration with their doctors who are not making the connection that their patients' new health problems could possibly have been caused by the vaccine because they're safe and effective, right? Also, many of their doctors don't know how to treat them, so they've had to go from doctor to doctor to doctor. Wouldn't it have been much less expensive, simpler and easier to abuse the relatively inexpensive medicines that actually worked uh, in combination with, you know, other drugs like the hydroxychloroquine, the ivermectin, budesonide, monoclonal antibodies, uh, that resulted in almost zero hospitalizations and deaths without all the terrible side effects of the vaccines? Uh, Bill Gates says he likes vaccines as an investment because they gave him a twenty-to-one return on his money. But what about all the damage done to millions of Americans? You know, which approach is really in the public's best interests? You know, we've all been betrayed by people we should have been able to trust. But the good news is there are many effective treatments, uh, for the vaccine injuries and, you know, long, uh, COVID, uh, including some relatively simple natural treatments as well as spiritual ones, because nothing is impossible for God. But both the patients and providers need to know, uh, what those treatments are and where But both the patients and providers need to know uh what those treatments are and where to find them. And the handout um you'll get, it'll include some data or some ideas to consider um which which I didn't talk about today. So my suggestions for regaining the trust are to look uh at the different ways and kinds of things that the federal government, Big Pharma, and others did that caused the trust to be broken, and then don't do what they did. You know, but on the proactive side, there there are several things that you can do, you know, to make a positive difference. And I've listed them in the handout that you get. But one thing, and Bob kind of alluded to this as well, is, you know, ask the people uh in your county what they think caused trust to be broken and how trust can be uh restored. You know, and seek to to satisfy their requests, or at least listen, give them an opportunity to speak and and listen actively, you know, unlike what the federal government did where they just shut everybody down. They wouldn't listen to anybody who had any better suggestions. And and then, you know, becoming informed about the big picture that all things COVID fit into, I think, is very important because it 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 relates to what lies ahead and what COVID represented. Uh, you know, if you believe it, it was just a virus that kind of came out of the blue and then, you know, started spreading, uh you might be interested in in doing more research on that subject uh to find, to dig a little little deeper uh because it has a big impact on on what's to follow. And then also becoming familiar with uh how nanotechnology and other technologies are being used in the medical applications and other things that affect health. You know, like what they're putting in our food and water, air, you know, things that we need for our survival. And these things are already happening. And, you know, state, you know, state uh governments real, should be taking action as well. But I think they're kind of slow on the uptake there. And, you know, the problem with the technology, uh which also relates to the COVID shots, is that um is that it can be used for good purposes, but it can also be used for for bad purposes, evil purposes, if you, if they fall into the wrong hands and are are used for those purposes. So, you know, just the basic things that that everybody knows about. How do you build trust in a relationship? You know, communication, honesty, integrity, you know, listening to the other person and putting their interests ahead of our own, you know, just those common things. Um, so the question that I think I will leave you with the, oh, plus, you know, acknowledging whenever mistakes are made and wrongs are committed uh that hurt people, and then apologies. I haven't heard any apologies from the federal government about any damage. I mean, they're they're not even really recognizing, you know, the the problems yet. Uh, but you have a good opportunity for providing a platform for people to be heard, to find out more. What what exactly are the problems? What are people feeling? And and, you know, what what are they looking for? And how can you help in your capacity uh on the Board of Health? Um, so again, thank you so much for the opportunity. I've hope I've shared a few uh tidbits that will help you understand uh, you know, this whole issue. And uh I'd be, you know, very happy to do anything I can do to help you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Sally, for your.
Just a mechanical thing. I think Lindy and Mary Jane should swap computers. I think the name is with their computer. So if you look, you're.
Oh, yeah.
Got names backwards.
As Mary Jane.
Just pick it up. Unless you want to be Mary Jane. I'd switch it.
I'm Commissioner Weber.
I can be Mary Jane for today. It's all right.
So the the board members, just so everybody's clear, the board members are labeled incorrectly on some of them. Uh, this is Lindy, and that's Mary Jane over there. And this is Commissioner Weber and Commissioner Dahl. Um, I'd like to open it up to the board to have a little discussion. There was a lot of information. Um, and we have Sally and Bob here that we can ask some questions. Anybody have some comments or questions?
I can ask you an easy one. The masking issue seems to be asymmetric. In other words, uh when we look at a a doctor in the operating room, the pictures always show that they have a mask on. I think they're not trying to protect themselves. They're trying to prevent the spewing out. And in that sense, I think it is decent if you're sick to wear a mask so as not to spew out into the public. I'm not saying it should be mandated or anything like that, but I'm saying as a basis of one of the conflicts we have and everything uh in this effort is that we have neglected just putting all the truth out on the table, all the facts out on the table, and allowing people to test them. And that requires definitions and exact uh circumstances or descriptions that the reason you wear a mask is because of this, not because of that.
So to to clarify what you just said, so I understand it clearly that they, the masks were, they told us if you wear the mask, you won't catch COVID. But but that was not true. The reality is that if someone is sick by wearing a mask, you can contain some of the virus or particulates uh as opposed to the what they were telling us. That's a very good point.
Some healthy people.
I would like to say something. So I want to articulate something I've said in previous meetings and say that we could sit here, meeting after meeting, for the one-hour short, brief one-hour we have every month going back and forth on COVID, making these definitions. We, this is not the place for that, in my opinion. If we want to rebuild trust in public health, if I was a citizen, I would want to see this board move forward on the things we've talked about and actually take action. So we have talked about using the money from foundational public health to address things that are crises in our community right now. Um, drug, you know, use and overdose, um chronic diseases, things like that, that we have started talking about. We keep going back to giving a platform to a very one-sided view of COVID, where I could come and I could say, let's go into a different expert next week and a different expert or next month, and next month, and next month. This could go on forever. We have the ability to look at one point two to four million dollars, I forget exactly, to use funds to actually improve our community. And instead, we're spending, going back, backtracking. I felt hopeful after last meeting. I'm feeling frustrated again that we are giving more time to this on this board. I do not think this is where we have our biggest impact for our citizens. So if we want to be, have integrity, have honesty, have communication, and put others first, it is not putting our agenda on COVID first again and again, mostly from the chair's perspective, without even taking into account other perspectives, which we know are out there.
So I couldn't disagree with you more, probably. This is, if you don't look into history, you don't learn.
That's right.
When you're talking about one to four million dollars of spending, you have, that is a drop in the bucket compared to the damage that the that the process prior has inflicted upon everybody. So that's that's not a relevant number. And then when you say biased and only one-sided, the people pressing the approach that was had, they had almost three years to press their, press their problem. And certainly from my position, my request was always just put the data out on the table. And now that the data comes out, there's an objection? No, no, we we need to be learning so that the next pandemic that comes along, we don't do the same thing. The the way we handled the pandemic essentially arguably destroyed this nation. We mustn't do that again.
So do you propose just continuing to go on and on? And every meeting, we we bring up a different topic of COVID? Is that what this Board of Health is for?
No, I I agree with you that citing this or that isn't going to be very useful. There has to be closure, however. I sat in here and I asked time and time again, please give on our website a a balanced view. It was always denied. So I think we, as a Board of Health, should adopt the attitude, if not the policy, that says we will not hide, suppress, or otherwise uh hamper the dissemination of information. Then we must understand that there, things do happen, like uh vaccines are good and bad. If there is a chance that the vaccine, like an HPV vaccine, is going to kill you or do something nasty to you, it should be your decision, not the state that mandates that you put this thing in your arm. So those are fundamental principles we should be able, as a Board of Health, to embrace. Everything else is going to be secondary and small compared to that.
If I, excuse me, if I might interject, and I uh I appreciate Alyssa's comments, but it feels like we have been here for two years meeting. We have not done anything that has had a positive impact on our community's health. We did the freedom, the medical freedom uh resolution, but in essence, that had no impact on anybody. You didn't need to wear masks, and that just says you didn't need to. So I for one would like to, I I would like to echo her concerns about, you know, we have, excuse me, we have people dying of fentanyl. We have people who have unhealthy lifestyles. We have teenage girls having babies at the, one of the highest rates in the state of Washington. We have STDs at one of the highest states of Washington. So I I I kind of, we've heard the, we've heard the story. We've heard the message. I appreciate the the input, and I appreciate the fact that we can take home a book and a handout, and we can uh take our time to look at it. But um I I think that we we beat this horse to death, and I think that there's consensus in this room. Everybody agrees that there were mistakes made. Um, and so I would like to um tackle the business of our community's public health, which includes those things I just mentioned. I have a couple of motions I'd like to make. I'm not sure when the appropriate time is, and maybe Kelly, you could let me know when that would be.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I want to comment. I I kind of sympathize with what Mary Jane has said. But if I just take this agnostic view of the data overall, we've been struggling with the problems she has mentioned since I was a little boy. And I'm, I don't have as much hubris to think that I'm going to find a solution because I am, I am that good or that special. So we 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 really do want to think not so much, for example, on teenage pregnancy, not so much on details there, but what is it fundamentally we're doing, which goes back to my thesis? What is it that fundamentally failed and then gave uh gave us the total mistrust of the government? But as long as we continue to ignore that.
Yep. We we need to, like the speaker said, we need to acknowledge what happened, not just sweep it under the rug and move on. I understand your concern.
A couple of ideas that says, you know.
So I would suggest that you make a motion that that language be included in the website, and then we can put this to bed, and we can move on with things that impact people's everyday lives.
What language? That COVID was.
No, you, no, 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 that you cited some language, that information and data be put on the database that is fair, that is balanced, that looks at both sides, because I would be hard-pressed to believe that there are not fifteen people we could get in town today that would would not agree with the presentation we just had. So if we're going to put information on the website, let's put both sides of the information. But you had some great language that you spoke about a few minutes ago. Make that motion that it go on the website. Task staff with with going through all the information, putting on balanced information on the website. And then we can move on with the business of help for our community.
This is part of the help we need in our community. I I do agree with the both of you that we do need to address those serious things that are taking place on a daily basis here in Calitz County. I appreciate that because you're right. We're seriously interested and want to do all we can about that. But the damage that this hat that took place in Calitz County, shutting down businesses and causing great emotional pain to many people, still continuing to put them in fear, that has never really been healed up completely. It has still people in fear. And I would more than welcome another point of view presented at this meeting. I would love to hear it because that's, that hasn't happened yet. Now that we've heard from one side, wonderful. We, many of us already knew that. But we'd like to hear the rebuttal as well because as of yet, we haven't heard a valid rebuttal to what we have seen and witnessed um throughout these these COVID years and after.
I think that's a great recommendation. And unfortunately, Kelly's the only one who sets the agenda. And so he's been choosing the speakers, and I would encourage him to invite some folks to present a different perspective.
Well, you know, Mary Jane, actually, or Lindy, I'm sorry. Um, wait, I'm just being facetious. I'm sorry. You can make agenda any way you want. Kelly always asks us what we would like on the agenda. And so really, you know, I think you should step up and ask for something if you want it. And I'm sure that we will be happy to be a part of that.
So I have.
Excuse me, excuse me, I want to clarify. Every item that you have asked for personally has been acknowledged. Every single item that you have asked. This last month, you didn't ask for anything. Nobody did. Neither did Alyssa. So again, I'd say that we need to acknowledge that there was a problem and that it is a concern for the Board of Health. If our government lied to us, if there is a vaccine that is questionable, that could possibly do harm, then that should be the number one priority of the Board of Health, not just funding.
Well, I just want to say one too thing. The Holocaust, we never want to forget about that, and I don't care what people think about it. But when it came to the trials, they actually tried people and put them in jail for the abuse and horrific things they did. I worry that we will never see the end of who did what where, and that's why I like to keep it on the forefront because we don't want to see that happen again. And we know probably who did it, and nothing's being done about it. And so I just feel strongly that it it's, I don't, I will never forget about COVID, what it did to my grandkids and the emotional harm and potential deaths of everyone. So um and the way they treated COVID, how they, how they used it against us, basically. So I'm I'm sorry, Mary Jane. I just, I would agree with Arne.
Yeah, before we move on, though, from the speaker, or were were you still with the previous speaker?
I I am. I wanted to say that I I encourage you, and I publicly make a request to Kelly to bring in some folks that have a very different perspectives and bring their data in and bring their their experts in. And so we can get a balanced perspective. And so my email's not been working. I don't know about yours, but I'm making this public request right now. And so, and also, I do have another topic when when we're done with this topic. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to address that request. You are free, as has been mentioned, to bring whomever it is you want. Now, the 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 point I want to make, though, and with the previous speaker, I disagree, and I disagree with you. Months before this board was formed, I was busy trying to bring, bring some rational balance on it because I did not know. And I was told basically, the CDC has spoken, the uh the Board of Health, our health officer, has spoken, shut up. I had spent months, over a period of months, I'd spent hours with Dr. Melnick and others just asking and probing and this and that. Never once did they do anything to debunk the data except to say uh those other doctors are idiots. I'm paraphrasing, but that's that's their attitude. It was completely uh denying that there was any validity there.
I I would like us all to take a breath and think about, if this turns into just meeting after meeting after meeting about different perspectives on COVID, I truly believe that this is not the appropriate form for that. If we want to get ideas out and have discussions in the community, let's create a space for that outside of meetings where things are supposed to get done, not just go over COVID over and over again. There are real things that need to be addressed, and we've talked about them before. And I'm not saying that it's not valid to try to remember what happened, analyze what happened, dissect what happened. We have an hour once a month to make a difference in our community, to make decisions as a board. I don't think this is the best use of our time. I need, I think we should all think about why we are creating, using this form for that. Maybe there needs to be another space where these ideas can be shared, if that's what's important for the community.
So I challenge you, where is your proposal?
I've discussed before about the foundational public health funds, using it to set up a community health assessment. As one of the things we could discuss, we missed having a say in the budget last year because we're working on the medical freedom resolution, which I came on board in the middle of, so I couldn't really influence a whole lot of the direction on. But, I mean, I thought after last month that that was the direction we were going, and we were going to talk more about, and my email was also down, so I did not have access, just like Mary Jane, so I could not access it.
Well, I can say that I don't count on the chairman as having to lead us through the, into anything. All of us are perfectly well able to make a proposal out there, so I encourage that.
So I would like to make a couple of motions then.
Let's, let's keep on this discussion, and we can move after the discussion, move into motions unless it's related directly to COVID motions.
Okay, go ahead, I'll wait my turn, thank you.
Thank you. Well, the first thing I'm going to start with is Samuel Clement or Mark Twain's famous quote, "It's easier to fool people than convince them they were fooled." And this is what I think has gone on with COVID. It was a massive psyop, a lot of misinformation, a lot of censored information. We're just bringing it forward, it's finally coming to light. When you have Fauci retracting the six-foot rule, when you have Fauci saying the mask really didn't work, when you have Fauci saying the vaccine really didn't work, you have Dr. Birx admitting she lied to Trump about it to exaggerate the threat to make the lockdowns more feasible to him because he was very skeptical. When you find out that they lied to you about hydroxychloroquine, that Japan was using it, that Japan was using ivermectin really successfully all over the world. They didn't tell you any of that, and when you put it on social media, you were censored. And the federal government was proven in court to have censored people, people with triple PhDs, like Dr. Bhattacharya, who I've mentioned before. If this was ridiculous, you have no experts on your side that were credible, that are saying anything about this. Now, everyone has retracted. Dr. Francis Collins said it was a debacle. You have the New York Times, the Washington Post, Oxford, MIT, everybody, Brown University, all saying it didn't work, okay? So there's no experts on your side, I'm sorry. And what I'm going to do is, is I'm going to go through, I gave him some things this morning. I was remiss in not getting it done earlier. But here is, here's the headline. Doctors confirm, this is from a mainstream site, doctors confirm vaccine connection after young Ontario woman paralyzed after Moderna shot booster. Then they offered her euthanasia as a remedy. They offered to off her, to kill her in Canada. This was from Ontario, okay? That's sick, okay? Here is, Epoch Times did a huge 24-page article on the host of notable COVID-19 adverse effects, backed by evidence. That is in a mainstream newspaper. Here is an email from the CDC internally, saying they don't want to cause vaccine panic, but they found a link to myocarditis in children. It was very serious. And what it turned out to be was eight to nine percent of the kids that got the COVID shot ended up having some kind of myocarditis, which ends up being fatal. Then we have the Brown University study, face masks do more harm to children's development. Study blames them for significantly reduced development. Then it goes into the whole thing. A 23% dive in young children's development. Disturbing studies show scores in 3K cognitive tests slumped between 2018 and 2021 with face mac rules among possible culprits, okay? There you go. Here's the Cochrane study.
If I could interrupt you, I have the utmost respect for you. I have the utmost respect for you. But I think now I'm going to go to what Alyssa says. We could be here today, tomorrow, every day. That isn't contributing to what I think we, I heard tacitly or implicitly stipulated that things were mishandled.
Okay.
So I'd like to look forward from here, not quite.
I understand, I understand.
It should be a little residual.
Just pointing out that these studies are real, and this, it's not as one-sided as I think.
I completely agree with you, obviously.
I could go on for hours.
I would, I agree with, with both of you, and I agree, I back everything that Arne has said, everything I wanted to come up here to say. But what I wanted to add is for 55 years, since I was 15, well, I'm not going to tell you. Well, now you know, 15, okay. So, at least you know I can add. So I had, there has been pregnancy, drugs, all these problems. So just like you want to solve those problems, and we want to solve the COVID thing, those are not being solved. We just keep throwing money and we keep doing the same thing. Build it, regaining trust in public health, I love that. That is huge, but it doesn't just have to do with COVID. It has to do with drug, everything. Our society, the more corrupt, and this is the point of what was addressed today, the more corrupt our government is, the more corrupt our society becomes, the more people are going to do, do the drugs, unwanted, all the things that are happening in our society. And I definitely don't have the answer to that. And I know that we have to throw money at things and put Band-Aids on. But somehow, if we can, somehow we have to gain people's trusts, trust. And maybe, I'm a mom of six children, and I was sitting there thinking, you know, maybe we need to put some money on family education or anything. But then I realize, all of my six kids, it doesn't matter what I teach them, they're going to do, you know, what they're going to do. And some of them have done drugs, so, you know, and I taught them better. But I just feel like maybe just having a little bit of a paradigm shift and, and going a little bit deeper, instead of just saying, well, we need to have this program or this one. Why, what, why do we have to have those programs? And what needs to, and how can we address the why we need to have them? Maybe that way we would do a little bit more with our money and everything else.
Good point.
Thank you.
I believe all of us can agree that our foundation should be truth, transparency, and accountability. And all of those have been violated significantly, and we are not holding anybody accountable, even today, even today with the records that are there. And nothing changes if we don't have accountability. The other is, we have to make decisions, both as a board and as individuals. And if we don't have truth, we can't make, use our freedom of choice to make good choices and hold ourselves accountable for those choices. So I challenge you, you can start right here, as you're saying, at our local community. So let's have good metrics on what the data is for STDs, for the homeless and for those. And hold the people accountable for good, solid numbers. And then you put a program together that has metrics, and you measure results on those metrics. Even today, let's just talk homelessness, we're not gaining on it, we're losing even more and more and more. So you can be significant in setting up metrics and holding people accountable and holding all the NGOs responsible for scopes of work and responses and results. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to say one more thing. One of the reasons that this is important, that we are talking about this, is because we had one pandemic. We will have something else. And if we don't recognize the wrongs that the government did, we will perpetuate them because people will have all that fear and say, oh my goodness, we've got to run back and close everything down. And I would submit that, that because of that, that accelerated the problems that we need to now address with the community.
Bob, I'd like to ask you if you can, oh, go ahead, Rose, if you like. And then I have some questions for you.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, I've been off and on for some years. Presented a book called The Real Anthony Fauci. I have pleaded with people to read it. It's got all these questions you're asking about. It's got all the data in it. It's proven, it's by Robert F. Kennedy Jr. I have pleaded and pleaded with people to read this book because you won't have all this back and forth, back and forth. It's got all the statistics. And then there's Dr. Naomi Wolf with DailyCloud.io. And this vaccine is not a vaccine, it's an experimental gene therapy, okay? It kills people sometimes. It depends on if you get a placebo or not. So the thing I'm saying is I've been watching this the whole time. And people need to listen to like Dr. Robert Malone, Dr. Peter McCullough. There were several of them, Dr. Brian Artis. And he even spoke a while back at the Clark County Events Center. But the thing is, is I went recently to the pharmacy, and a while back, one of the pharmacists, I said hi to her name. She didn't even have her name tag on, and her and I are fine together. When I said her name, she goes, oh, I have, I don't have my name tag on, but you're okay. And then recently, when I went back to the pharmacy, I go back there, there's another guy there, and he said, everybody just quit and walked out. And it's like the other ones were saying that they were getting tired of being yelled at and stuff. And the thing is, whether I agree with them or not, I'm not going to be rude, you know? It's part of my principle to be courteous to people, you know? But they need to be educated, and they can be, it's out there. If you're willing to do what we suggest you do. And if people don't want to learn because there's the people at the top, as long as we keep them dumbed down, they'll be fine. But when you have the information out there and we tell you and you don't look for it, that's on you, but you don't have the right to tell us, you know, you're elected officials, you're paid. And honest to God, if I was an elected official, I don't even think I'd want any money. I just want to do right by the people. So I'm just saying that if I had a choice between, you know, getting somebody saying, I'm going to take you out if you don't take this, well, you better take me out because I'm not taking that. But I'm saying the information is out there in that book, and there is others too. So please get that book called The Real Anthony Fauci by Robert F. Kennedy Jr. I have brought the book in here different times, I've showed it to you. And anyway, due to time sake, I thank you for your time. But I also do have screenshots on my phone, which I'm not going to pull up right now, of the things that show what happens when some of the people get the experimental gene therapy, and it thickens their blood, and it causes myocarditis, et cetera. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I've listened to the pros and cons since this began, and I need to ask a question. Okay, this is the Board of Health explicitly. I know that your authority only goes so far, but you have the ability to make recommendations. Right now, from what I see, again, I understand what you're saying, we've brought this topic up over and over and over again. And we need other topics to be discussed as well. But nobody's doing it because this topic is so vital, and we don't know what to do. Okay, this is what I'm suggesting, whether or not it has any promise at all, I don't know. With your authority, you can't, you can't say, but you can suggest to the hospitals. And this is what we're asking you to do. This is action, this is not just an idea we're throwing around and talking about. This is what we want you for, to think about and actually take action. Go to the hospitals as your authority, the Board of Health, make these recommendations. That they do not follow the guidelines that are there. I mean, there, it's a suggestion, not a command. I understand that you're, they might think you're overstepping, but with all of the information that you have, making the recommendations that you don't follow the guidelines that have been brought out, which is the vaccines, vaccines that are recommended for the schools, bring that out, stop it. You have that authority to make recommendations, I believe. Now, I know that you don't have the authority to actually tell them that, okay, the kids don't have to be vaccinated before they go to school, but you can make the recommendations. You can stand up. This is what we're asking. Let's not bring this topic up again, like you say, because you're going to take and actually use your authority to do something. All four of you guys need to get together and say, okay, we are going to take action on this. It's been brought up over and over again, and so now we're going to do something about it. And then go and do it.
That's, that's an interesting suggestion and comment.
I guess I want to try and summarize what I think I'm hearing here. The first thing is, each of you, I don't care if you've been sitting in that chair a day or a month, or five years, you represent the Board of Health. You're members of the Board of Health, you get to wear that title. If the Board of Health in the past has taken actions that has created distrust, I don't give a crap if you call it COVID or what you, what you want to label it as that started this. It's the actions that were taken by the government at every level, right down to where you're sitting in that chair. If I don't trust you today, I don't give a damn what your agenda is for tomorrow, then I don't trust you tomorrow. So you got to fix the trust problem. If you have an issue there and you can't move past that, then why do you think any new program you come up with is going to suddenly be welcomed by the public? Somehow you've got to address the trust issue. And I think that's the whole gist of, people are keep pointing the finger and saying COVID, COVID, COVID. Well, yeah, COVID may have been what originated this problem. But the actions by the government from every level, all the way down to where you're sitting right now, that pushed it onto the public, and now that there's so much coming out. Bad part, Fauci, one of the primary figures, who all of a sudden is changing his story, and some of those people at that higher level, that all of a sudden started waffling and, and changing who they were in representing certain stands, and then flip-flopping on it. I don't know why you would think suddenly that you're going to, I don't care who you bring in, why you think you're going to make that a trustworthy person for somebody that sits in that higher level of government, who pushed it one direction and then pulled it the other direction, and then tried to push it back again. I don't know how you fix that, but at the local level, somehow, you've got to figure out how to rebuild that trust right here. And I know it sounds crazy, but sometimes standing up against somebody's orders that come from up on high and saying, gee, why are we doing that? And questioning it rather than just saying, I'm doing it because I was told to, or somebody else said, they told me to do it. Maybe questioning a few things might get you a long ways in public trust.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So it just, a quick comment, I've sat here long enough to realize that many times people do things that they know aren't really right, but there's the dollar amount involved. In other words, the government makes it easy for you to transgress. So specific to, to the, to the COVID situation, as an example, when it, when we first heard of it, there was so much uncertainty that we declared an emergency over that. And within a short amount of time, some of us understood, there's more than meets the eye here, and this is not the right thing. Well, we, we languished with the emergency edict for well over a year. I don't remember exactly. I remember asking questions about why we continued, and one of the explanations I recall was, well, we got a million dollars worth of PPE for free. And we had tons of PPE lying around, PPE, personal protection.
Equipment.
Equipment, thank you. And that was the rationale. I bring that up as an example because for everything we do, we, we have the threat. I bring that up as an example because for everything we do, we have the thread of, well, if you don't follow the party line, you will not get funded for this or that. I say that not for my colleagues here, they understand that, but for the public to understand. We need their support when we go against a mandate or something like that. They have to stand behind us and say, yeah, barely, they are our representatives. And to be aware that for a dollar today, we indenture ourselves for years to come.
I had a couple items, but it's down a different path. So I'll take it on a day when we're not stuck on this.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, yeah, we've just been handed some books here and some information. And I would ask all the board members to go through it and see if there's something that you object to. Because I do believe that, somebody mentioned that we get paid up here. Some of us do not get paid. And so I do believe that it is important for the Board of Health to be open, transparent, and acknowledge, like our speaker said, some of the solutions is to not repeat the same problem again. And to do that is communication, honesty, and acknowledgement. And so it's not just, we want to keep talking about it. It's we want to get to some kind of, what do they say, healing closure on it. And that's how I feel, is that there's still a lot of questions that have not been answered. And I'd like to ask Bob if you know, I don't know if you know this answer, but have we ever came up with the answer of whether the COVID virus was created in a lab? Or is it natural? That's something that we should have figured out years ago. And I'm sure it's being hidden. I'm sure it doesn't want to be talked about. But the fact is that if, just that one fact, if it was created in a lab funded by our tax money, and it's made us sick, don't you think that the Board of Health? I'm asking the whole board rhetorically here. Don't you think that the Board of Health should be focused on that?
No.
No?
No, because at this point, that's sort of irrelevant. If a person is dying of COVID, what difference does it make where it came from? To first order, to second order, that's important. But the government has transgressed in lots of ways. That's one way, if it was lab-created, something you have to understand. But I think we're going to be here, as Alyssa said, forever, saying, well, we've got this anecdote and that anecdote. We have, we, I think we have to embrace, the only way we're going to win back any confidence or trust is if we continue to put the truth out. And maybe after a long while, that will take a hold. Because once you lose trust, it's very difficult to regain it. But if we continue bickering about one detail or another, I think the case has been made. Things were handled massively improperly. What's the fundamental there? Does government have the right to mandate things? That's something we could figure out, deal with. We need to tell HHS under website that the health officer must be involved with providing a balanced view of the situation. When you go to a doctor's office, they always say, well, your diagnosis is this. Are you sure, doctor? Well, you're welcome to go get another opinion, or something like that. Another opinion is a standard thing that you expect out of the medical community. Why, it was denied to us. That is something the board could say, we won't tolerate that anymore. I don't know how to put that in a motion, or I would have offered it. I don't know how to do that. But if we look at fundamentals, we'll move much faster. And then we can address some of the more, what I would call manifestations of our bad behavior.
Does anybody have any further questions? Or comments? Mary Jane, you said you wanted, usually, if it's, especially if you already have a motion, I think you should have communicated that before today's meeting.
I tried really hard, but I hated to interrupt you.
You have my cellphone.
I hated to interrupt.
No, I'm saying before today. If it's an agenda item, something like that, where it should be motions, it should be on the agenda.
I thought, excuse me, Kelly, but I thought that under old unfinished business, that that would be a chance to slip it in there, because I believe it is kind of old unfinished business. But I didn't have an opportunity. I didn't want to be disrespectful and interrupt you. But that, having said that, I would like to make a motion to direct the Health Department staff, and I know we're just actually making a motion to the commissioners, to prepare a work plan and a budget to utilize funds for the upcoming year based on priorities of the Board of Health and the Board of Health and the County Commissioner and the staff's priorities. And I would also like to make a motion to direct the, well, so let's just tackle one at a time. Because I believe we have an opportunity here for $1.4 million in funding and the foundational health funding. So I'd like to make a motion to direct the Board of Health staff to prepare a budget and a work plan to utilize those funds.
Present that at our next meeting?
Yes.
I'll second that.
So the motion is, just so I can understand, the motion is to have the HHS staff to prepare, or to request the HHS staff to prepare a priority list of ways to use that money?
And a work plan as well. And actually a budget on how to utilize those funds, based on the discussion that we had at our last meeting.
Those are grant funds?
Correct, what do they call them?
Foundational Public Health.
Yeah, okay. See, I would always ask a question about that, is if it were your money, would you do it? If we passed a hack in the town here and collected whatever it is we needed, so everybody chipped in, would we spend it like this?
And I guess I believe we probably would. If we could save some, you know, a half a dozen kids' lives from fentanyl, if we could prevent 15-year-olds from getting pregnant, if we could keep pregnant moms from smoking cigarettes, if we could prevent heart attacks, I believe we probably would if we felt like they were utilized well. And that's why I would ask that they would put together a staff based on their priorities and our priorities. Again, the priorities that we discussed at the last meeting. And the top of the list of things that we need to, I believe that we need to address, and I have to say, I agree with Mr. Klosnawski, is that we have to understand what our baseline is. We can't just be throwing money after programs. But if we don't have a current health assessment, the last one that was done was over 10 years ago. So we need to understand where the, what the health of the community is. And then, based on that information, put together an approach. So the first thing on the list that I would like funded would be my dream, would be the health assessment.
And may I just ask a question on that? How much is that health assessment, and how long does that take?
You know, I think that's a question for staff.
I'm very pessimistic about that, because we handle data very badly, and that's part of the reason we don't know where we really are. We have doctors in town, we have hospitals in town, we have the CDC, we've got all kinds of numbers. To go and ask someone what they think is their health problem doesn't seem to me to be a very useful concept. Yet I think that's what I hear. I remember, what was it? He ran that organization, and then when he retired, it dissolved. The gentleman was involved, and he was pretty well-known, I can't think.
Do you see Bridgewater, maybe? Do you see Bridgewater?
No, no, no. What was it, Dennis? I think you might have been on the board, it was.
What, 2014?
Anyhow, he.
Pathways 2020?
Pathways 2020, thank you. Yeah. And I don't know, we've got a fair amount of history on Pathways 2020. And I don't know that, we, I don't think it's been analyzed. And I haven't heard any data that makes any sense to me.
I think a community health assessment wouldn't just be going around asking people their thoughts on their health. I think it involves a lot more, including taking the data we have and putting it into usable format so we can make decisions. Because like you said, there is federal data, there's state data, there's local data that someone conducting a community health assessment would look at. And then also would go out to the community, analyze services available, talk to folks. I think there's a whole component. And if we don't truly understand what a community health assessment is, maybe as part of the work plan that's being presented, that could also be included. So we know what we're paying for, which I think would be good.
Well, I'm a little skeptical about it as well, because here is the Community Health Improvement Plan that was done 10 years ago. And it's a long, it's a long, thick book of pages and lots of information that was researched very well. But the priorities that they came up with, the solutions, there's three of them, are almost unobtainable. So I'm wondering if we're going to duplicate the same amount of work and come back with the same priorities that are not enforceable, not.
Did you read it?
Yes, I'm going to, that are not obtainable. The, from 2024, excuse me, from 2014, the plan came up with the priorities is to ensure healthy starts to life for all children. That doesn't seem like the board can do much about that. Improve healthy habits for residents of all ages. That's nice, nice to think about, I think we should. And to increase opportunities for economic success. These three things, I don't think, were achieved with the last report. They haven't been fixed. We still have the, we still have the same problems. And I don't know, I'm skeptical at least, to do another one of the recent reports and let it sit for another 10 years and have basically no effect on the actual health of the community.
I guess I wonder how you know there wasn't an impact? I mean, some people would argue that things have gotten better, or without that document, things may have gotten worse. So that might be another.
What's gotten better?
I think she's correct. We just don't know. But when we don't know, why would we encumber the taxpayer with another $1.4 million exercise?
We'll be able to see where we are compared to there. And I don't think it's going to take the whole $1.4 million to do that. I think we would find our priorities and then do programs to address them. So if we're talking about healthy starts for kids, if we're talking about healthy habits, I see our school gardens programs in the community as a huge effort towards that that's improved over the years. If we know that those are our priorities, we can put money and time and attention to them and see where we go. And so that's just one, like off the top of my head, hearing what there is there. Those are the big picture items. That's the roadmap. And then we use those to gauge where we should spend those additional funds, is how I see it.
Can I, may I address HHS out there? Carol or Gina, how do you feel about another study? And do you feel it was worthwhile, the last one? I know I'm putting you on the spot. But was it useful to you, or would you rather see the funds used for something different?
Yeah, what came out of the last study is what I would like to see. What did HHS do with the last study?
Well, I'm not going to be able to speak to it very well, because I wasn't, I think I joined HHS right afterwards. I know School Gardens was part of some of that work. I also know HHS had some, had some dedicated staff that were to work towards chronic disease prevention work in healthy communities that were decreased over time. And so in thinking about doing a new study, you know, I think we want what the community wants. How can we help the community? And what does the community want to see in terms of healthy habits or increasing health in the community? And that's what we want to do and be involved in. So if an assessment is a mechanism to get some of that information and feedback, then I think that would be great. Some of you mentioned, one of you mentioned, it could look very different. It could be very in-depth, very time-intensive, very, you know, thorough. It could also be, you know, a little bit lighter, depending on what the board would want, how much funding to dedicate, how much time and energy, et cetera. So it could look very different, depending, but, so. I don't know if that really answered your question, Lindy.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to point out too, that the motion is to ask for the priorities. At the last meeting or the meeting previous to that, there is this paper that we got from the Department of HHS. And it does list their priorities, so.
Do you want to read them?
So I guess my motion would be to use those priorities. And I think that there was some consensus on the Board of Health that those made sense. And use those priorities to build into the budget for the foundational health funding. And my motion would be to come back to us with a budget where you've merged, married, the foundational funding dollars with what the priorities are and how to approach each of those priorities that you guys identified.
Some of the things that were listed on that, on the Health Department's priorities are substance abuse, STDs, STIs, chronic disease, and viral mental health. One of the things is listed, is actually, didn't come out of thin air. It was right here on the first point of chronic diseases, to enhance the school and community gardens. And I agree that that could be something that would be worthwhile. And actually spoke to the director of that program yesterday. And we have him scheduled to come at the next meeting, the next Board of Health meeting, to talk to us about that. So we are kind of moving on on certain things. Another one of the, I think, the most important and probably the most impactful could be to, where did I go? Here, it was youth prevention through assemblies and other educational opportunities. If we prevent the youth from using drugs and vaping and alcohol, that will hopefully carry on somewhat towards adulthood. So there's a lot of these things that have already been outlined. I'm not sure that redoing another report, again, I'm skeptical, and doing another report that sat there for 10 years and didn't really do much until today, to redo that and spend the money again might be throwing good money after bad.
Well, so how about I amend my motion and make the motion to direct staff or request of staff that they put together a work plan and a budget incorporating their priorities with what they've heard from the Board of Health, utilizing the $1.4 million, and present those to us at the next meeting? Could you second that?
Would that be enough time? My question is, there are agencies out there, like the Care Coalition now through the schools, that might have some data related to the drug situation. And that you could do some of that, working with them to see how they prioritize and what they see as a need, rather than do a major study? Because I think we have pointed out some of the real key issues right now, from what I understand.
And I believe on that particular topic, we have for next meeting, the May 28 meeting planned, for the coalitions to come and share information about what they're doing. And also a presentation on drug overdoses in Calhoun County. So we'll have some of that for the May meeting.
Yeah.
So Gina, is it true that the notices have begun to go out from our finance office about getting ready for, preparing next year's budget?
Have they? I'm not sure if I've seen them. I know she's been working on a budget amendment.
So, and I just bring that up, is that, before we know it, we're going to be in budgeting season.
Yeah.
And I think it is very timely for us to get a report back. I'm not particularly as concerned about targeting $1.2 million. But coming up with a work plan, resources will be available. We can figure out what, how much of that, you know, we're in agreement with. But I think having a work plan to report back, so that we have something to digest and to adopt that we can get behind, is saying, yes, we're actually going forward, we'll get the resources. And I'm okay with doing that.
So would that be, Commissioner Weber, would that be taking this list of priorities they did and then adding?
I think we had a consensus that those really hit on the key things.
And then just adding some action items to it?
The whole issue about a new assessment is highlighted by the fact of what isn't in that report from 2014. And it lists two things that we've talked about today. You've mentioned fentanyl, I don't think is in there.
No.
Vaping is not in there. And so part of that work plan should be updating the assessment. See where we are, where it fits in. We know these are our priorities. Let's get a work program going. Let's get a work, work program going so that then we can ask for the right kind of appropriations. We don't have to spend $1.2 million. But without even a plan, we don't know what to ask for.
Well, and I guess nobody is, why, I particularly did not expect that a assessment would be $1.2 million. But my vision was that be included in the work plan. And I guess my frustration is, is that we talked about the budget numerous times, but we haven't put together an action item. So that's why I'm making a motion, so that we can actually move forward and make some progress in terms of what next year will look like for, for you guys and for the community.
I've been around quite a while now and, uh, I, I'm never going to stop anybody from, from planning, but I, I would suggest that we, we really think wholeheartedly and in detail in our minds, what it is that we have or haven't been doing that aggravates the problem because there's very little that's new under the sun. But let me skip all that. Couple of procedural issues I'd like to recommend the board. One of the issues is to embrace that any board member can bring up a, uh, motion or any item during the meeting or, you know, that if you didn't get it in time for the agenda, so be it. But I don't want to stifle anybody from bringing something up. And, and so if, if we could embrace it, that's okay. You prefer to have advanced notification for the public so that the public would know that they, that there might be a topic of interest. Then, uh, the other one is today was an interesting thing where our main Tuesday meeting didn't take up much time. And, uh, here we are at the board meeting and, uh, we're an hour and a half. And, uh, I think an hour is just not enough time, even though we're supposed to meet quarterly and you, you did it almost monthly, even at that, an hour doesn't seem enough to get us past the adrenaline and getting going. So I would encourage the clerk of the board to see that on those days, we have a, as light a possible 9:00 AM agenda and a 10:00 AM agenda, I would say maybe lasts until noon sometimes. And I, I, I'm not like, I don't like to be driven by the clock. I want to be driven by an accomplishment and I don't want us to feel arbitrary pressure. That's just my suggestion.
Rick, you've been pretty quiet. You want to say something? Just liked listening to you.
He just liked listening to me? I don't know what you want me to talk about. I, I, I'm, I'm not a big fan of spending money for studies. I think if I can drive down the streets and I can see the problems, it's, I got two eyes. I got good common sense. I know what the issues are. I see drug abuse is probably one of the, the biggest ones. We've had, you know, this whole, I, and, and I can tell you the direction we take doesn't work. I can see that with my eyes. We've had, uh, this compassionate, whatever you want to call it, approach isn't, isn't working with failed policies in Olympia, failed policies in Salem, failed policies in Sacramento. You know, left, left coast of this United States houses 50% of the homeless people in the United States are located in our three states. 72% increase in, in drug overdose year, year after year, year over year. It's nuts. I know what the problem is. The problem is the, the compassion, you're going to make me get into my notes.
Sorry.
I was, I was good.
Good.
The current outreach problems, they're visible failure, failure. In the name of compassion, we've neutered our greatest innovation, innovation, intervention agency, and that's law enforcement. They're the ones that contacted these people. We've stripped the judicial branch of authorities require change. And we've turned our correction facilities into short-term warming shelters. We actually provide the tools and safe sites facilitate people harming themselves. I think drug abuse is probably one of the biggest things we have. Can we solve it? Are we going to solve it? No. But we can make it better. We can make it better. We don't have to be this three states that houses 50% of the homeless population. That's just insane. In Seattle, these failures, there's skeletons being found beneath the garbage. Let that sink in, skeletons, skeletons, bones before they find them. These failure, we've literally turned compassion into manslaughter. I don't know how it's not manslaughter. You, you give them the tools and they go out and they kill themselves. How is that not manslaughter? You can't even drink very much in a bar and then leave and harm, cause harm and it isn't manslaughter. But we're okay giving them tools to do that. But I don't have all the answers, but I think there's a couple of things we need to do. And I, I would love to see us discuss that. We got off on, on a different tangent today, but I would love to sit down and, and discuss ways to do this. And I think one, and I have three things in there I think need to be looked at deeply. And it needs to be looked at honestly and, and put your feelings aside and let's, let's erase the chalkboard and start over. Law enforcement, judicial and corrections are the backbone of the intervention system. We have to recognize that. They must be allowed to, their full array of abilities and they must be in sync. They have to be working together. Number two, we start, we got to stop facilitating abusive activity. These people are not hospice patients preparing to die. They're human beings that have a future if we have the courage to direct them that way. And number three, we can't do solutions based off of what Olympia or Salem or Sacramento gives us. We have to have the courage to do it better and do it right. And that's the kind of construct, I don't think I need a study to do that, but I would love conversation around that to try and develop a plan and do something for Calhoun County. I don't give two rats what, what Olympia does. They've screwed up. I, I got the numbers. But that's probably our biggest issue around here. You, you can just drive around and see it. You got people all over the place. You got, they're, they're in neighborhoods, they're in businesses. It's, and it's not, it's not compassion to let them kill themselves. I'm sorry, it's not compassion. That, that's selfishness because you're feeling good about yourself, you're helping. That's just selfish. If you want to help these people, there needs to be some structure, you need to have some work in it. And I'm, I'm open to honest, uh, conversations about that and, and I have no issues with that, but you're going to have to put your feelings aside and you're going to have to get real. And I don't need a study to tell me that. And if you want to take that money and put it and we develop something like that and put it into action, I'm, I'm, I'm much better with putting money into action, but just to put money in to say, well, I think we should do this. I don't need to think what we should do. I can see, go out there and see what we should do. So is that enough thoughts for you?
That was great. I appreciate those comments. I wrote them down and I'm going to study them.
Jenna, can you talk a little bit about the guidelines associated with the, uh, the foundational health funding?
Uh, well, I didn't bring any material to talk about this today. So I'm happy to bring more information back. The foundational public health services funding, it, um, it, I believe it's intended to enhance what you have available in your community. Um, it is fairly flexible. And so it could potentially support, um, different, different approaches, different ideas, different, um, topics. So a part of, you know, we can definitely incorporate that. And if there's definitions and further information about FPHS and what it can be used for, we can incorporate that into the work plan, um, so that it's part of that and it's can be clear.
I think I have an illustration of, uh, basically along the lines of the chairman, which is, it's an indicative illustration. Back, uh, oh, I don't know, 20 years ago, maybe cocaine was the big thing. And then that got replaced. No solutions as to the drug issue all the time, the number of drug users kept on climbing. And, uh, not long ago, it was heroin. And then now it's fentanyl. When we say that things are different now because fentanyl is there, we're, we're just on a, on a, on the curve of drug abuse. We're not going to find a solution for fentanyl. We need to find a foundational solution, which is really what this foundational program is for. But then I go to the chairman, I said, just because we changed the names of things, we haven't found a solution yet. We actually do enable stuff. I, I, I could tell you more, but it's the same.
Is it, what about a work session?
History tells me when you look at it, we're never going to solve the problem completely. Just not going to happen. I mean, it goes back to biblical times, people were abusing themselves. But we can do much better than what we're doing now is, is the point. What we're doing now is the wrong path. It's obvious it's the wrong path and we can change that, but it, it's going to take some courage and it's going to take some fortitude on our part.
Would that be a work session?
Just throwing that out.
We're going to stare you down.
I, I'd like, um, what I'd like to do is because we're running, um, we're going long, um, is with Mary Jane's, um, motion, it's not quite clear. It's been altered a couple of times. So if we could, I, I would like to table it, number one. But number two, I'd like to ask you to, to, uh, come with a, a more clear motion based on the priority list that HHS has already given us. Cause I do like your idea that this is just a list and it should have some action items. And so I'd like to see what kind of possible action items we could do, um, instead of just going back and throwing it to them, say, okay, this is what you gave us, now tell us what to do.
So I, I'm not going to accept. I, I prefer not to table the motion and I'm happy to clarify and or simplify the motion.
Okay.
And my motion is to direct the Board of Health staff to prepare a work plan and a budget to utilize foundation, foundational public health funds and utilize, uh, the, the work plan be based on the priorities that you guys as the Health Department, who are first line workers, you see what's going on, who, that you've identified on the handout that you passed out last week. Nothing says that would be carved in stone, but that would be a place for us to start and for us to have a positive discussion about how we're going to affect the public health in our community. So that's my motion. And, and I believe it's $1.4 million. So that's my motion is to have a straw man draft of a work plan and a budget for our next meeting utilizing the $1.4 million foundational funds.
I'll second that.
I don't think we need it.
Don't, don't need seconds, but that's.
Well, I will.
Barry Jane, could I, could I just ask, could we add a matrix to that? That plan so that we'd know if it was effective after it's been implemented as part of the money?
This is a draft I'm talking, so of course.
Yeah.
Input would be asked for at our next meeting.
Could I respectfully ask a question?
Please.
Could that possibly be put to the June meeting? Two reasons. One is very selfish, I'm going to be on vacation the next two and a half weeks. And two, um, we have, the next meeting is very full already.
It is.
I think it's going to be a long one.
I, I just don't want to lose sight of it.
Absolutely.
Understand, everybody understand, this is an action item and we will be putting together and working on in the form of a bit of a workshop, a draft of work plan and budget. That's fine. Thank you.
This to me is again, a perfect example of sort of the cart before the horse in the sense that I've heard time and time again, we cannot let that $1.4 million go by. What we really, I, I'd be perfectly happy to use the general fund to support whatever the time that staff uses to, to do a work plan there. Based on the work plan, we may want to go and get $1.4 million if we think that we have a perfectly useful solution that we want to try. But I don't like doing it in the other order. That's just my comment.
So, so Mary Jane, would it be, um, maybe, maybe the answer is a workshop to, to flesh out your motion?
You know, we workshop the budget a couple of different meetings. And so that's why I'm asking for something more concrete, a work plan with numbers attached so that this board can bite into it. And, and in terms of Arn's, um, comment about putting the cart before the horse, it was my understanding, and maybe I'm incorrect, that the $1.4 comes no matter what. And you could tend to, you can utilize it or not utilize it. And I believe that it has been underutilized a number of years. And so I think that our community could benefit from a, a definitive document that, that describes what we identify as priorities and how we're going to approach those priorities. So I would like, and I, I don't want to crunch you guys for time, but in two months, a document in front of us that is a straw man, is a draft that we can tweak.
Yeah.
That's, that continues to be.
I think I under, I understand. I think what Mary Jane is asking for, and I think we're happy to put that together. And to be honest, I, we can, we can look at the foundational public health services funding. Is that what has to be what funds it? I mean, we could have that conversation about the funding source. I think the, the biggest hurdle is maybe to flush out those priorities and what strategies the Board of Health is interested in pursuing. And then we can, um, further iron out the details of the funding, the time, uh, those pieces as we have those discussions. But I think I understand, um, what you're asking for in terms of sort of a straw man kind of deeper dive into that.
Well, and I would hope that you guys would have a better handle on action plans than the board here. And if anybody does have any ideas for action plan items there, certainly I would expect able to email them to you between now and months from now.
Absolutely.
I think to the point, a little bit of a point that was made on funding, I think it's, it's funds available, it's not anything we ask for. If we expand in that category, we get reimbursed. I mean, we're given a, a credit line, so to speak, each year, no matter what, we don't ask for it. It just, then it's a matter of what we spend, they ask for reimbursement, right?
Right. It, this particular, yeah, this one comes in, uh, I think two different lump sums and we reconcile at the end of the year. What doesn't get utilized sends back to the state.
So it doesn't have to be a formal request. And then the BOCC can make decisions if we want to, while we think this time is better spent out of the general fund or whatever.
Sure.
That's more a decision there. We're not asking the state to send us money here. They're, they're saying this is available. If you have expenses, you can reimburse yourself from it that fit this. So, uh, it sounds like we're getting a little bit off, off that we're asking for money. We're not really asking for money. It's, it's there. It's almost the same. Yeah. Because their opportunity cost. Yeah. Yeah. And, and the principle, the principle, I think, still stands.
So let's, um, go ahead and restate your motion one more time, please.
I would like to make a motion to direct the Health Department staff to prepare a work plan and a budget to utilize funds for the upcoming year based on staff priorities and Board of Health priorities and utilizing foundational health funding dollars.
By June?
By June, by June.
Now you did, you did say, I would like to make, does that mean you are making it?
I am making.
She's making them.
Yes. I'm making a motion to direct the Health Department staff to prepare a work plan and a budget to utilize funds for the upcoming year based on staff priorities, for the health priorities and utilizing the foundational health.
Okay, that was clear. Thank you. We've had a lot of discussion on it. Should we take a vote? All in favor of that plan to get HHS to work on a budget plan? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Think we didn't get about three, four? Did you count that? Four people?
Four people?
Okay, so the motion passes. Okay, yeah, I think that it, it could be a good guideline to, to help us, uh, in the future. Let's see what you can come up with already. This is a pretty good start, I think.
Yeah, I'd like to throw out just that certainly we're not the only county in the United States, let alone in the state. So I, I hope whatever you come up with addresses and says, because this worked here, we expect it'll work here. Something like that. So we, yeah.
Yeah.
As best as you can.
So with that, did you have a second one, Mary Jane, too? Okay. Okay. Um, well, with that, you have any more further comments on the budget?
Well, yeah, I wanted to make a comment really quickly. It's going to be short. I just wanted to say, I'm astounded that, um, it requires the board of health to intervene in his health issues that kids should have gotten in school. And if they haven't learned nutrition, sexual restraint, like not getting pregnant, drugs, and how to feed themselves properly so they don't become a whale. I don't understand how you're going to be able to do it with the money you're spending. So I'm trying to throw cold water, go ahead and try. But it seems to me there's a lot of educational deficit in our educational system to begin with. And what the main thing I want from you is to leave me alone and not enforce draconian measures that make no sense. Cause now they're coming up with the new scares, avian flu, which is garbage as well, because I've looked into it. And they're using the PCR test again, which the inventor of the PCR test, Carrie Mullins repeatedly said, until it's passing, it is not a diagnostic test or anything. It is a scientific assay test, not a diagnostic one. Thank you.
And then our speaker, Mr. Reynolds, would you like to say a closing comment or anything?
Just thank you again for the opportunity to present and to remind you that we're still looking for accountability. We do have some handouts for those in the audience, uh, just as a light version with resources to follow up on. And the data is still being gathered. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you and Sally also for the presentation. And then, um, one more comment?
Jane.
Two, two more comments?
Yeah, um, I, on Kelly, I wanted to apologize to you about the money remark I made. So about being an official and being paid, I'm sorry about that.
Don't worry.
Um, and then as far as a question to Dr. Bob, um, about the whereabouts that COVID came from. It is manmade and it was from, made from the Wuhan lab in China. And, um, then Big Pharma is also like, they, like pushing it. So all the money, you know, they're using to push whatever narrative they want to use to scare the public. Anyway, they're giving special incentives to all these doctors and stuff to push it so they can make extra money. But anyway, COVID was manmade and it was made in the Wuhan, China lab. And that is expressly so by Dr. Peter Navarro too. And he is a good man. But anyway, I wanted to make sure and address those things. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, this takes a lot of courage to come up here with this because it's going to sound extremely naive. But I have had a lot of success in things that people have said, there's no way that you can do that. And, uh, I guess what I, the first of all, I'm going to make this comment, but it's not the answer necessarily. But it is hopefully a jumping off point because I feel like a workshop with the right, when you have a plan, a workshop, soliciting help and comments to become a better and bigger idea is a very helpful thing. But the comments have been made and we've seen through history that our drug problem is not being solved. All these things are not being solved. So my thought, and again, this is just a, like if I was in a brainstorming session, what I would put forward is that there are a lot of very responsible, um, great students at the schools, high school. And they have a lot of compassion. They see what's going on with their other, other students. And I would suggest that, um, since other programs are not working, what would happen if we spent some time, um, bringing together students that said, you know what, I would like to help with this problem. And then we picked, they picked people that they, because it's their friends, they know them. And that they said, let's work together with these people. Let's spend this money on this. Let's get these kids clean. Let's do this with these specific kids. And then let's take that, that group and make a bigger group. And just, I, I'm just suggesting hands-on with people that care, with people that know what's going on. And I know that's extremely, I know that I have made things like that work because I care. So you have to find somebody that really cares. I know we've done, um, some amazing, grassroots is where things happen. We've seen things happen through grassroots. So I'm just saying grassroots, there are students that, um, even if you, you know, paid them or, or rewarded them or something in some way. That's just one thought because we keep doing things that are not working, like Rick pointed out. Anyway, that's just my two cents worth.
And Jane, that's true. And the care coalitions that are in the schools, they're trying to do that grassroots thing. Yeah. And, and we're hoping to have them come and talk to us about what that's all about.
They were scheduled and had to reschedule, but so next month we hope to have them.
I think it might give you hope that there is some things.
Please.
Thank you. I was very pleased with and excited with the medical freedom resolution. One of the things that comes out of reading something though, that makes your mind start working. In fact, it so made me start working. I had, I don't trust the news media in, um, summarizing it. So I printed it out and read it. And then when I read it, it sent me to the dictionary because it had words in there that I didn't even know what they meant. So anyway, those things created a lot of thought on my part. But the other thing it raised in a question is there are other resolutions that would be, might be just as meaningful and all. So is there a way to find out what the process is to make a resolution, be it on any subject, not just medical resolution? So I realize we're only kind of talking the one subject today. But I, there are broader things we can do and look at, but there has to be a process. So is it written down or do I need to interview someone? How can I find out the process?
The secret to answers of those kinds of questions is always the clerk of the board. She knows everything. So she would direct you on that. But, but essentially, uh, any citizen can communicate with any little board members and say, I'd like this resolution. And they may say, uh, yeah, or, or nay. If they say nay, you can go to another board member. Essentially, the resolutions appear here only through the board members. But they have to respond to you, if you will.
So, so if you have some kind of ideas, please send it to the clerk and that will get to us. And then we're also open to, to speak with you too.
I appreciate it. I will, if I may, I'll speak with your clerk. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I want to close the meeting at, uh, twelve oh five. Thank you all for coming.
Hey, Kelly?
Yep.
Not you, but you, are the, are the, some, the, what are they called, those little security fobs? Are they working again now or do you know? Did I, should I bring mine in or? Okay, okay.
So there you are.
Yeah, I don't know.
Will you probably get yours through that?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.